You didn't.
All four. Do you want to make a motion to continue this hearing to, uh?
Uh, do you want to do the minutes first?
Can we do the minutes?
We usually do the minutes.
Then you can do the minutes. Go ahead.
John, Barry, Damon, okay.
You were all here.
You were all here.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May 24th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor? John, yes.
I don't think you don't have to, um, roll call anymore.
You don't have to roll call. All right.
Nope.
Aye.
Aye. All right, too. All right, uh, so you guys want to make a, uh, motion to continue the 35 Cape Road.
Let me make it, Barry. You want to make it.
Go ahead. To what date?
I'm gonna give you the, the 26th, but, uh, to the Mendon Plan and Board, please continue our 35 Cape Road hearing to the next meeting date. Uh, the applicant is waiting for some revised plans from the engineers that weren't available. So we'll be.
Next meeting date is when?
Uh, July 26th.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for 35 Cape Road to July 26th, 7:00 p.m.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, hold on.
So July 26th will be the next meeting for you, for anybody that's interested in that. Yes, sir?
Yes, uh, Harold Olaf, United Road, uh, I'd like to talk something about 35 Cape Road in regards to the solar field.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm a neighbor, uh, you know, budding it, and I'm probably about 150 foot or so from the property line. And, uh, the solar field is running a generator. And, uh, that generator is a constant hum, and the odor, it's like following a diesel truck on the highway, uh, when the wind is in the right direction. Yeah. Uh, I don't understand why there's a, a generator going. And if it's going, just temporary, like when it's going to be taken care of and moved off the property.
Yeah, um, is it a big portable generator, or is it?
It's a portable, yes.
On wheels?
Right. Now, I, I have, uh, I took a picture of it or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's a sign that says for emergency, uh, contact. Here's a telephone number. So I thought, okay, I can get ahold of them that way. When I call that, it rings an ring thing, and then it finally comes on and says, uh, the voice box has not been set up yet. So, so much for emergency.
Yeah, right, right. Um, I think we can, we have a phone number for the people for the solar fields, right? Because we were contacted with them for the, uh.
I'd probably have to look through the file.
Right. Do you think maybe we could come up with a number? You can get it to me.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll see if I can call and find out what the plans are, you know, for the, if it's long-term, or, I know they've been putting poles in.
Yes.
To get power down there. So I don't know if they need to get power there before they can start using power, or if that's there. I'm not really quite sure of the sequence.
That's what I was anticipating, is that they're, they're keeping their equipment going until the hookup. Uh, but the lines have gone out to, uh, to the street, you know, at this point.
Yeah.
Um, but still, you know, I got that, that constant.
Yeah, I think there's an email chain going around, and I think that maybe we have some contact phone numbers, or at least an email, where maybe I can get some information.
Yeah.
And, uh, and if you want to check with, maybe check with Gail at some point next, maybe give us the week to.
Give about a week, though?
Yeah, maybe next week, just give her, give her a call, and we'll, right? We'll try to figure, figure something out for you.
Oh, the other, when is the project actually going to be completed? And thinking about the environmental barrier, you know, the, the black plastic.
Oh, the silt fence?
And, I mean, right now, there's some foliage there, so I can't see it quite as much, but, you know, it's, it's an eyesore.
Usually with that, once everything's stabilized, all the grass is grown, you know, that, that abuts the wetland, usually when that's all grown and stabilized, then they'll, they'll go out and take, and remove it. Some of the stuff, if it's a silt sock, sometimes it's just left there, it's, it's, you know, it'll just decay and, but if it's plastic, if it's the black fence that you see.
That's right.
Yeah, so they, they should take that out once.
So it's no really time?
No, there's not a time. I mean, stabilized, but.
It can last for.
Well, before they come into a conservation for a, um, you know, a certificate, a certificate of compliance, they will have to, you know, it'll be inspected.
Okay.
And checked out, make sure that all the grass is grown, there's no erosion. But that's there to keep any dirt from going into the wetland.
Right, right, yeah.
It's kind of going to be there until it's very well stabilized. Um, but we'll try to get some information for you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we did, uh, Bill Drexel submitting a site plan special permit for 5 Morrison Drive?
Yes, here.
Thank you. Yeah, Gail, if you, if you can get me some, I'll do, I'll do the whole one for you. I mean, I'll manage the calls if you want me to help them. I'll just keep them happy.
Yeah.
How we doing?
Very well. How about yourself?
Good.
Bill, do you have the, all the paperwork that goes along with that?
I'm sorry?
Do you have all the paperwork that goes along with that?
Um, I have.
The application and everything?
I have, um, well, the application and everything was for the 12th, for the meeting on the 12th if we get approved, uh, to go to the.
But you're officially submitting for a site plan special permit, right?
Okay, I have, um.
I need all the paperwork and.
There's like the list of the butters and things like that.
And the fees and everything.
I have, I have the applications here, but I don't have them filled out.
Yeah, so all that stuff has to be done and completed. There has to be a check, a bottomless list.
It's supposed to be done when.
So that it's notified.
Okay, I thought that was done after you gave the approval for the 12th. I misunderstood.
No, it's supposed to all be submitted at the same time, but.
Okay.
And we need two, um, originals signed by the owners of the property, okay?
All right, like I said, I have that stuff here. I just don't have it filled out.
Okay, so you'll, you could bring it to me tomorrow?
Yes, I did.
Because Wednesday I'm off, so if either tomorrow or Thursday, it'll be fine, because you weren't, didn't know what you had to do.
Yeah, I can definitely have it tomorrow. That, that was my plan.
Okay.
Is to have it tomorrow.
All right.
I have some, um, um, some printouts of the plans here. Um, I've got some.
Take a look at them.
Those, uh, I've got some 40 scales, and then I have some miniatures, if that, um, if that's easier to handle.
Yeah, well, you can just, okay. Just take the small ones for us.
That's for the, uh, site plan, and I also have, um, a drainage, uh, and utility plan as well.
Huh? Yeah, one of them. Yeah, thank you. Awesome, yeah.
What I, uh, what we're, what we're planning on doing here is develop the site into those three buildings, as you see, um, in 60 by 254, um, buildings. We, um, we're going to separate the roof runoff from, uh, from the rest of the runoff from the pavement, put those into underground recharge system. That's a symbol that you see in the back and in the center, um, and it's labeled as a underground recharge. Um, we've got about, um, I guess about 45,000 square feet of building. Uh, the pavement, uh, we want to use bituminous, uh, that comes in through the driveway, goes up through the middle. And in the back of each building, uh, that would be the, um, the, the west side, the south, and the north, uh, we wanted to take that area and make it a pervious pavement. Uh, there's a type of, um, product that we can, have used in the past that works out well. It's suitable for, uh, fire trucks and vehicles of that weight, and that'll cut down on the pervious area, uh, impervious area. Um, the two detention ponds that you see there, those are, those were built, I think, back somewhere around maybe 2012, uh, as part of a, a previous, um, uh, proposal that, that I guess was approved, and then everything kind of stopped.
So there's no drainage there? There's just, just the basins were built?
Yeah, right. And, and what I had to do is, uh, I have to make sure that the volume in these detention ponds is large enough to accommodate, uh, the pavement that we're picking up. Uh, that's one of the things that, uh, one of the reasons why we went with the underground recharge as well, for the roof drains, to minimize the flow going into those detention ponds. Uh, there's actually two of them, and there's three equalizer pipes that go between the two of them.
Mm-hmm.
Where the driveway crosses. Those equalizer pipes are already in, um, as well as the, I think it's the two detention ponds. Uh, we're also proposing to separate, um, the first detention pond, the one closest to the buildings. Uh, you'll see like a, um, a bar going across. Uh, I'm going to put in a, um, a line of gabions, or a, like a wire basket with stone in it. And that will, that will be used to, um, filter out some of the sediments and create a forbey, because there's really not a forbey here, you know, to speak of. So we'll have, uh, whatever sediments are in there, they'll settle out into catch basins. Um, we have a hydroguard unit on, um, on each drainage line before it goes into the, um, detention pond that filter out, um, more sediments and also oil, um, that may accumulate on the pavement. And then it'll overflow and seep through that, those gabions and into the, the second half of that first detention pond. And then it'll flow under the driveway into the second pond, and then out, out the door where it goes now. Um, the grading, I, I, right now, the grading is sort of like a, like a dome. Uh, there's a high point in the middle, and everything flows to the edges. Uh, what I want to do is, um, grade it as a, as a bowl.
It should be done at the public hearing.
Yeah. Something to do with all that. These, these are all going to have to go to Jeff Walsh and everything and get.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So. Have you sent them to Jeff yet? Are they, he's not even ready. You sent them to Jeff?
No.
Oh, they haven't submitted, that's right. No, no, he's just submitting now.
Submitting tonight.
I mean, real, I mean, you don't, you, you're not really even, this, you've got a lot of work to do here.
Right, a lot, believe it or not, a lot of the work has already been done on this.
Right. Well, I mean, it's, to update the plan for, you know, stormwater management and everything. You know, you'll have to get with the town, you know, our engineer.
Yeah.
And Jeff Walsh.
Uh, yes, from Graves Engineering, yeah.
Yeah, and make sure that he's, you know, everything's the way he wants it, you know, we gotta kind of, we gotta get his blessing. Um, but I mean, you can, you can, you can submit, get everything done, get, get you on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah. Uh, how far in advance do I need to get this information to Graves Engineering?
As soon as possible.
Yeah, I would get it to him, you know, at least within a week of the, of the meeting, or if you can get it there sooner, huh?
Everybody's busy, so he's gonna.
Yeah.
Give Gail a money and submit them all, and then.
Yeah, I mean, you should get them, get them up there, because he's gonna, you know, he's not going to take five minutes to, to look at. And if he has any things that he wants you to change, at least you'll have time to, to change them, too.
Yeah, we, we worked on the proposal, um, in 2014 for, um, um, the other facility that was going to be proposed there, uh, Bates.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and, um.
Yeah, that's a little different than what you got here, though, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually.
Only one building there.
A lot less of, uh, impact, I think, with this than what we had.
You were on, you came, you were at the conservation meeting, too, right? Did you talk to, we haven't?
Uh, not yet. That was my next step, within the next couple of days.
I thought we had a conversation about this the other day. Maybe it was something different.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you know, you should get, I would get with conservation as soon as you can, too, because there could be some changes here that, you know, with all the wetlands and everything.
Yep. And, and again, we, we flagged the wetlands from, uh, from before, because the flags were gone and.
Yeah.
And so forth. So we want to make sure that they concur with that. So, um, that's basically what we're doing here, uh, as far as the proposal.
Do you think you should wait to submit the site plan until it goes to conservation and everything?
No, I mean, it's not good, he, he's going to have to follow the guidelines for conservation anyway. I mean, but if there's any small things that, you know, that we might want to change, that'll probably be, I mean.
I think Jeff will have more to say than.
Yeah, Jeff is the one that, I just want to make sure that, that the drainage and everything is, is, you know, the stormwater management is all done the way that it's supposed, so that's pretty much.
So is he going to be ready on July 26th?
Are you gonna be, you think you're gonna be able to get everything done right away?
Yes, I'll have it about a week before the 12th. I'll have it at Graves.
It's not going to be the 12th.
The 26th is the num, is the date of the next meeting.
Oh, I think, I think we talked about July 12th.
Well, we only have one.
Yeah, we're only having one meeting.
We're only having one meeting in July, so it's going to be the 26th.
The 26th of July.
Yeah, so you've got a little extra time.
Oh, okay. All right, I would definitely have it to Graves before that.
Yeah, but like, allow yourself enough time to get it.
Three, four weeks before that, yeah, with vacation and stuff, Jeff.
Exactly, yeah.
Do the best you can.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And then just stay in contact with him. Maybe you, you guys can work together by email. It'll probably save you a lot of time and aggravation, you know?
They get it all worked up before the meeting, it'll go a lot quicker.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna get your.
We worked together on that previous proposal for Bates, and it, um, uh, it was a good interaction, you know, as far as communication and getting things done and.
Great.
Turnaround time. So I'll definitely have this by the, to him before the end of this month, before the end of June.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll have, he'll have everything he needs.
Yeah, you can, you want to take these, so you got them?
Um, we can.
The only thing is, um, do you know what you really need? You need two form ends.
What, yeah, you.
You need eight sets of the plans of what you're doing.
Okay.
Because you need one to go to Jeff, and you need the whole packet.
It's on the website, right?
Should be.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
Any questions, you can peek at that, too.
Yeah, just give me a call.
Okay, and.
And then I need a $2,000.
Okay, and I, um, I, I can get these forms and everything till you're filled out, and I'll, I'll get the list of butters and so forth to you.
Need to apply to the Board of Assessors for the butters list.
Yep.
Okay, that should have been done before you.
You're gonna need to bring that, when you bring the check, bring everything, then she'll get you on the agenda.
Because I don't, I, I'll be honest, I don't like to get this piecemeal like I'm doing now.
No, no, you gotta get, bring it all in and get it, get it to her, but bring everything at once, so we're not, she's not forgetting about it, and then she can get you on the agenda right away.
All right, so if I, I get that stuff to you, say, by Thursday at the latest?
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that.
I'll be out of the office Wednesday, so.
Just get, get with the assessors as soon as you can.
Get everything you need by Thursday. We need a $2,000 check for our revolving account for Jeff.
Okay.
Okay, and, yeah, if you could get a set of everything to Jeff in Worcester.
All right, that's, but I mean, as far as, um, getting the advertisement for the.
I take it there.
Okay, all right.
I'll handle that.
And that's what I need to get to you before Thursday?
The form ends, that will tell me what.
Okay.
If you've got any questions, you can give her a call tomorrow. She's in the office.
Yeah, give me a call tomorrow.
If you, if you missed anything.
Give me a call tomorrow if you need to.
We'll do.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Are you taking those back?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you need to make the, um, motion to set the public hearing?
Yep, but we haven't got it smilled yet, can. Yeah, I know, yeah, and I'm not, we'll, we'll let him get everything to you. Well, we can set it, you know, we can.
It says you're not going to meet until the 26th, though. I can't put it on for the 26th. They'll let you guys vote to approve the date.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for 5 Morrison Drive for 7/26/21.
Second.
What time, 7:20?
At 7:00.
7?
We just put everything at 7:00.
Oh, good, you started doing that now? That's a good thing.
Okay, Barry, seconds?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey.
All three, after which.
Attorney, uh, Attorney Ryan? How are you?
Great, how are you doing?
Good.
That's the new rendering.
Good.
Okay, Damon, I'm sorry if I went over your head to talk to him.
Huh?
Very nice.
I says I'm sorry if I went over your head to talk.
Oh, no, I don't care. No, no, you're right. It's not over my head, Gail. Yeah.
So I went and yelled at the architect.
Yep.
I yelled loud.
Makes a difference.
Yeah, he's a city guy. So I said, listen, we're not in the city, over here in Mendon. That's for sure. So I told them, get this reworked, deal with the solar, et cetera. So here's what you're seeing for renderings, which is right along the lines of one of them that I brought to you originally, with all the others.
Much nicer.
It really is. And I liked what he did, like, he, he did something different. He put some dormers on this, as you can see, on the roof. Um, just the way he, he did this, I think, um, after good talking to, he came up with what I was.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I was even envisioning for this type of thing.
Yeah.
And he was able to incorporate the solar on the back roof, so you actually won't even see it from the front of the building, which I like that. I'm not, and he also has, if you look at the last page, the VW bus in there.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
So I, what I'm asking for today, if, if you would agree with me, I, I like this design. I think it does have the spirit of Mendon in it, and I would ask that you would approve this particular design.
Make a motion to approve this design, submit it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That was easy.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No, and, um, I'm gonna just keep, I can keep the, I want to give them, so Bill can see them.
You need any extras? I have extras.
You got them here, I got.
Well, that's true, and I emailed them, too. Gail has them, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
That's what we like to see.
Okay, John's second that way.
John's second, and Barry made, and Barry made the motion. Uh, Jessica?
No, Jessica.
We're very informal here. We're informal here, don't worry. If Bill was here, he might have did something different, but let's go, we gotta go.
I run a, a large group of daycare out of my basement, my walkout basement. Um, I'm looking to turn in my whole house into the daycare preschool. So I would, we would move out, and the whole house would be it.
Okay.
We are zoned general residential, um, so I don't know if that's a possibility.
You know what? I mean, it, I don't know that it says. So you're trying to go from 20 to 40 kids?
Yeah, so it actually will be 39. I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure.
I put a question mark.
Yes.
38 with a question mark.
Okay, John.
So that's gonna, that's zoned, uh, general residential?
I thought that's what it was zoned. So you could run a business out of your house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I'd be moving out at that point, so I don't know.
Well, it's just basically the area, I think. Right, Fred?
Eight Hartford.
A top at that western.
Yeah, the whole, the whole street.
Yeah. Is it in the uses? You got another book over there? Use regulations, allowable land use, right?
Yeah, it's your, that's your zoning one, so.
I got it, yep.
So it's no longer going to be occupied, right?
Huh?
It's no longer going to be occupied.
Not as a permanent residence, right?
So that may change the.
Use.
It'll be a change of use, right?
Right, so you'll have to change that.
I think that you have to go through a zoning and get a variance.
Yeah. Let me just look around. Rural residential, general residential, yeah. General residential, home occupations, yes. Educational, exempt childcare facility as defined, a subject of exemption. It just says, it doesn't, I don't, it doesn't really give family childcare home as defined, large family childcare home as defined. It just basically says plan and board, but it doesn't really have any certain numbers.
I don't think we had any with numbers.
No, no. So, I mean, I, you should check the town council or something like that. Uh, Bill might have had that answer. Unfortunately, Bill's not here, and I'm not up to the codes. I don't, it just basically says, yes, just put, put plan and board.
Yeah.
Residential. Yeah, that's the one you gotta, bed and breakfast, keep going. Oh, right here, municipal, large family childcare home.
Fine, yeah.
Family childcare.
Planning, planning board, yes. That's a general business.
General residential.
General residential.
I mean, it might be something that, I just don't know where she's, what the situation is.
Yeah, I think that.
Where she's not gonna live there.
Not live there, I think that'd be more in the business instead of general.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So you're thinking now.
I think I go to the zoning board, get a variance for run a business.
Okay.
In a residential.
Okay.
A home occupation, oh, well, it wouldn't be a home occupation either.
So I mean, now we're changing, like, if you was, huh?
It's not a home occupation.
No, it wouldn't be a home occupation either.
So that's why you might have to go for a special, for a variance.
For a variance from CBA.
So on CBA, huh?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, and then come back here afterwards?
And you would come for, back, back here, I think, for the special, like, for a permit.
So, okay, if they were. She would have to go for a special permit?
I would think that would be.
I would think you have to get a special permit, yeah. Don't you think?
Yeah, but you just got to get.
You'd have to get their variance to allow it first, and.
And then it would go to general business.
Yeah.
Which, that's not zoned.
Just that one parcel, though.
Yeah.
And they do, they, do they sometimes do that, or not?
Huh?
Have they ever done that in the past, or?
I've been on it for quite a while. I don't think we've ever done a home into general business.
There isn't, those don't come up.
But I can't remember.
Every day, either.
That much.
I mean, this is a different situation where.
Been on it 30 years, and I, yeah.
I mean, there, you see more stuff getting moved from commercial.
Yeah, we do a lot of, lot sizes and stuff like that, frontage and.
But it doesn't mean that it's not something that can't be done. I mean, I, I think that, you know, no.
Well, we just had one, the dog breeding, but that was a, just a home business.
Which is fine, like I said, that would be very simple if you were still living there.[1763.91]
Dog breeders living there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that was a little different.
Right.
It'll change, it's changed.
Just a home occupation.
Okay, all right, so go to zoning, and then...
You need to go to Ellen.
Okay.
She's the zoning.
So call her, and it's her.
And I'll talk with Bill, too, and see if this, and find out if we missed anything here, but I think that's what you're gonna have to do.
I kind of figured, but I just wanted to start the process.
Yeah, that's right.
You know?
You don't want to say you downed the wrong road, then have to do it all over again.
Exactly, exactly, okay, awesome, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys, have a good day.
You too.
Fred?
What's up, Fred? How you doing? Uh, I'll just... Did you get a copy of a letter that I submitted?
I read something, I saw it in a...
Yes, I sent it to everyone.
Yeah, I read it.
Okay, I'd like to swap it out for this one, I had it.
This is the one that I made?
Okay, here, swap.
The wrong date for the, uh... Can I see the... For the subdivision regs.
Yes, swap.
There you go.
You rip up the right one, right?
Yes.
Now, I referenced the subdivision regs that were under, but it was the wrong date, so that has been rectified. But what, what we're trying to do, we had kind of a busy site over the last couple months up there at Misco Springs, just before they paved. We had subcontractors, we were working the lots, we were trying to get the road ready for pavement, and it was kind of a crazy scene up there. So this, we think that this measure by itself, just getting the foundations only permit before we, we bond the road, before we pave the road, is gonna allow the site work on the individual lots to get to a, an advance, much greater advancement than if we do everything all together. So the next phase is a cluster of lots to the end of the cul-de-sac on Locust Hill Drive, and those lot numbers are in here, and we just feel like, when we go up there, after the bridges, the bridge will be installed very soon, and once we get over there, we're gonna be able to get on those lots and start the road.
This is to the right of, of the, of Misco building?
Where are they, Fred?
No.
On the map, Sean.
This is the end of the, the road that they just built, they just paved. So here's where they paved up to.
Yeah.
Yeah, they paved, yeah.
Okay, coming up, yeah.
So it's these lots right at the end of the cul-de-sac.
All right, so they're gonna come back around?
Try this with this group, foundation only, before, before we have to put surety up. And it has nothing to do with the full building permit, we're just trying to get the foundations in the ground, so we can get those lots much more developed.
That's all yellow.
Yes.
But the road's not in?
What's that?
Is the road paved?
No, the road's paved up to here now.
All right.
All right, so this, we're working this.
Yeah.
It's at subgrade.
Okay.
So we're gonna have these cleared very soon, but the very next thing is building pads and wells. So we'd like to be able to put the building pad up and continue on with the foundation, it just takes a whole group of subs off the property when you're actually building the house.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I know the sequence, I'm just trying to figure out why they would want to put all that money out, I mean, not that that's my, my business, but, and, and they're gonna sit on them and leave a foundation sitting there for six...
Uh, well, they're gonna, they want to build these very soon, so...
You can only do is put a foundation, and you gotta get the road done, no?
Oh, yeah, yeah, but the road is, the road's to subgrade now. They're gonna, we're gonna stake out the, we got some drainage structures we're gonna stake out, get the well rig up there, I mean, the, the driller for the, for the ledge, he's gonna explore it, but they're, they're three feet below finished grade right now, right to the end of the cul-de-sac.
Seven lots, seven found, I mean, I, I don't know that, it just seems, it's kind of extreme, you're not putting up any money, I don't want to put up any money for the road.
Uh, well, when they bond the road, certainly, I, I don't, they're probably gonna bond that right after pavement, right after binder.
Think this, I don't, what do you guys think, I mean, I think it's giving a lot of lots up there, I mean...
I mean, we can't sell them, right?
Oh, no, you can't, no.
The, the risk is all on Bruce.
Right, yeah.
It's, uh, there's nothing up there that's flammable, it's concrete, so...
You just want to put foundations in, and that's it?
That's it.
No wells?
But with the foundation up, we can do much more grading on the property, so when the road gets paved, the building permits, we're gonna be building real quick once the road's paved. But it keeps people off the site while we're trying to get the road done.
I can see the advantage, and probably some of these lots are gonna use a fill from your blasting to fill some of these lots.
Oh, yeah, not like the last section, the last section was...
That was a tough section, I know, I drove up in there.
Yeah.
That was tough.
It looks nice now, though.
It does look nice.
Other neighbors, the neighbors, uh, got, got them toned down a little bit.
Oh, they got, yeah, they gotta be, and this will help that, if we did this on the last section, we would have been way better off.
Yeah.
You know, we don't want what happened last time to happen again, because we want to keep the neighbors happy, so...
I don't like doing it, but I mean, he's doing a pretty good job up there, and he seems, seems to do what he says. That's my opinion anyways.
All right.
Make a motion.
So what are you making the motion to?
Foundation permit only.
Foundation permit only for lots, 23, 37, 38, 62, 63, 64, and 65.
So you're making the motion, John, right?
Yeah, for foundations only.
Until, until, until asphalt...
Yeah.
The road is, is...
And no other work done until...
In binder.
Right.
Yeah.
Until road is...
We're not gonna be asking for building permits early like we did before.
Just a foundation permit.
Yeah.
Okay, foundation only.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Aye, yeah, second, all right, good?
All right.
I wouldn't like doing that, but he's doing a pretty good job there.
I mean, I understand the, the logic, though.
I can understand the logic of doing it up there.
I mean, it's definitely gonna make life a little easier, you can get everything in there.
Yeah, and, and we'll try it.
Yes, it'll work.
And if it doesn't work...
He's gonna know right away, I mean, he just, you know, you just, if you tie up seven wells and seven foundations sit there, I mean, just, I don't know how good it is for stuff to sit around, but he's gonna have to make, it's gotta be...
Oh, it's gonna be quick.
Yeah.
He wants these built, we get a lot of people interested in those lots right now.
Yeah, I'm sure they're gonna go like hotcakes, so you're gonna want to get them done.
Right.
So Fred, do you have, Fred?
I thought John didn't want him to put the wells in.
No, you, no, you can do the wells, yeah.
No wells, just foundations.
Just foundations, oh, okay.
Fred, do you have, do you have house numbers for these lots yet?
The wells, I don't see the wells, that's not part of the sequence, right?
That's, that's, you gotta go through the board health there.
Right.
You know, if you have an approved septic design, then you know where your well's gonna be, you can put the well in now if you wanted to.
Yeah. I'm sorry, what?
Do you have, have house numbers for these lots?
Uh, yes, I do.
Can you send me a list, please? Well, can you send me an email with them?
Sure. Actually, I had a, a little plan attached to the letter.
Oh, I didn't see that.
She's not gonna meet that.
Oh, in here?
But, if she meets the NGO 40A, section three, right? Sorry, yeah.
I don't think so, Fred, no, there's no, yeah.
In the law.
No.
Across the board.
Yeah, just send me an email with the lot numbers and the house numbers.
Right, and, I mean, and, but that's, that's, oh, childcare, oh, okay, yeah, that, oh, that's not a, that's not in hometown, that's, that's childcare facility.
That's, that's straight up childcare.
Oh, okay, so you can, so...
Across the border, she meets this exemption.
Oh, if she meets that, right, I'll look that up.
So whatever that, whatever that says, that determines whether she can or she can't.
We don't have the book here.
Yeah, I know the national law is for 40A, section three. But that would determine whether she, if she is, that would, she wouldn't have to vote us off.
Yeah.
As far as the family care home, no, that's completely separate.
That's general law.
40A, section three.
Does that C gotta be in front of it, no?
Yeah.
I misassumed it.
C, 40A, section three.
So then, why wouldn't she have to go to the ZBA, then?
She won't have to.
It's a yes in all districts, if she meets that law. Across the border, it's a yes.
No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit the owner and occupier of a residence which has been destroyed...
Occupier.
Because she's not an occupier.
Well, like I said, I don't know what the law says.